Good evening, welcome to the May 7th, 2018 vote of selectmen's meeting. It being 6:03 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anybody recording the meeting?
Yes, I am.
You are?
Yep, Gary Mendez.
Gary Mendez?
Free Cam.
Free Cam. Vote selectman recording, nobody else? Thank you. Tonight's agenda, it's kind of a full agenda tonight. Board of Health at 6:00 PM has a health variance for nine Winslow Way. Ray Levy, discuss with Ray Levy regarding retail and medical marijuana sales, which I believe Ray requested that he get put off. He's not going to attend tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
That's our recording secretary, the wonderful Ally Galls. What should I say, magnificent Ally Galls? 6:00 PM presentation from Bartholomew for advisory services on other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. 6:00 PM discuss fiscal year 2019 budgets with the planning board, town administrator's budget, and capital budgets. Also, 6:00 PM discuss approved articles for insertion in the special town meeting and annual town meeting. Weekly discussion on the consent agenda. We have approved Chapter 90, final request for South Main Street, Gurnee Road, Washburn Road, Narrows Road, and as submitted by Highway Supervisor Charles Macumber. Approve an interdepartmental transfer for health insurance to union pension, as submitted by the treasurer collector. Review and consider an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins and discuss proposed response to complaint. Discuss letter sent from town moderator regarding special/annual town meeting on June 4th, 2018. And a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Scott regarding their intent to remove 46th East Holland Road, map 219, lot 14, from Chapter 61A, and the town's right of first refusal. Sign the agreement with stop and shop for use of the bypass road for the annual 4th of July parade, rain date being July 7th, 2018. Sign approved Sunday entertainment license for St. John Newman Church on Sunday, May 27th, 2018, for Lakeside Family Festival. Discuss and vote on declaration of land at 15 Bullock Road, as submitted by the town administrator. The town administrators will report. Board of Health to discuss contract options with Republic. Personnel Board to discuss hiring of a video editor for meetings. A point slash sign change of status form for Christopher McKay as planning technician, as submitted by Kevin Desmaris, chairman of planning board, effective May 7th, 2018. A point sign change of status form for Timothy McIntosh as temporary part-time recording clerk, buildings/police subcommittee, effective May 7th, 2018. Accept Louis Amaral, letter of resignation as senior clerk for the finance committee, effective May 1st, 2018. New business, dates of upcoming meeting, Board of Selectmen's meeting, Monday, May 21st, annual special town meeting, Monday, June 18th, Monday, July 16th, Monday, August 6th, Monday, August 20th. And then for executive session tonight, we have executive session, discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting law have existential effect on litigation position of a public body in the CHSO declares for Excel Recycling LLC versus the town of Freetown. So I'd like to turn it over this time to the Board of Health for the Board of Health variances.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
For the record, Niall Zager from Zenith Consulting Engineers. He had four U-9 Winslow Way. Very simple septic repair, system was in failure. So we went out there with Derek and your health agent, did a perk test. We found the soils were desaturated, very saturated. We couldn't not perform a perk test. The way to do was called a STP analysis. There's three different variances that were asked for, one of them being the STP analysis. One being reduction in the number of deep holes that we were able to do. Title 5 requires two, we were only able to do one because of the limited area in the rear of the property. And then the third one is we're asking for a reduction in the separation of water table from four feet to three feet. It didn't eliminate a pump system, which is typically why you ask for it, but it did eliminate the idea of having it be more mounted out of the ground and pitching the water back towards the house. So from an engineering standpoint, it's a better situation. So the three are fairly standard local upgrades that it granted, and we don't think there's anything that would create any health issues. Currently, it's a system that's in the water table that's in failure, and we're just putting in compliance with Title 5.
Right. The Board have any questions?
Would you step back from the nearest well? Did that change?
We are actually, we're about the same. These circles right here, if you see the circle, that's 100 feet from the well. So we're about 120 feet.
Niall, which side of the road is now you're on?
If you're going up, on the left-hand side. So the cul-de-sac and this other three up here.
No questions?
No questions.
Does Derek? I'll make a motion to accept as requested.
I'll second it.
Pretty straightforward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next was discussion with Ray Levy. As I stated, Mr. Levy couldn't make tonight's meeting and asked to put it off again when he petitions the Board sometime in June. Presentation from Bartholomew for advisory services for OPEB. Come on now.
If I could just preface the presentation by saying that we did, the finance team had met with three firms to review their proposals, to look at the OPEB financing or investments. And based on the three reviews that we had, one was for Bartholomew, the other was Stanley Morgan, and the third was Rockland Trust. We, as a group, chose to invite in Bartholomew and recommend to the Board them as our financial advisor for OPEB and potentially in the future, other accounts such as stabilization or capital stabilization. So with that.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you so much for having us this evening. What I will do is just start with by giving you a brief overview of who we are and what we do and our municipal experience. So we are an independent investment advisory firm. We're based in Western Massachusetts.
Excuse me, can I just have you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. Michelle Newcomb with Bartholomew &amp; Company.
And I'm Chuck Patterson from Bartholomew &amp; Company.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So once again, we're an independent investment advisory firm. We're based in Western Massachusetts. We've been in business since 1994. We currently have over 1.8 billion assets under management, of which over 1.1 billion represents municipal funds that we're investing for over 220 municipal entities across the state of Massachusetts. We say entities because while many are cities and towns, we do have some regional school districts and some collaboratives and some smaller districts and smaller entities that we're working with as well. So of that 1.1 billion that we manage, about 175 million of that represents OPEB funds that we're investing for about 140 municipal entities across the state. So ones that go as small as $3,500 all the way up to upwards of over $16 million. So we've really seen a very wide range of OPEB accounts in all shapes and sizes and getting started and have a lot of familiarity with that. So because we've been managing municipal money for so long, we have a deep understanding of Mass General Law and how municipal funds can be invested. In our presentation, our first tab does give you our company overview. We also include our industry awards and how, I'll make sure, to see how Tom Bartholomew and some of the other advisors in our firm have been nationally recognized. Since we are an independent firm, we are affiliated with Commonwealth Financial, which is our broker dealer. They are the largest privately held broker dealer in the country with offices in Waltham and San Diego. And then all funds are held at the Custodian, which is the National Financial Services, which is a subsidiary of Fidelity. On the next tab, we'd like to give you the background and credentials and pictures of the people who work with the municipal accounts, starting with Tom on down. Tom really sets the macro investment policy. We have our municipal division, which is headed up by Chuck Patterson, who is also the COO of our company. And then myself, Brian Jamros, and Dory Hewer also work, all four of us work together. And our municipal clients get all four of us, which is a really nice way to work because Chuck and Dory are both former certified municipal treasurers that stay certified, that teach out at school in Amherst for the Mass Collectors Treasurers Association. Chuck was the treasurer in the town of Shrewsbury for 14 years, and Dory was actually the treasure collector in the town of Paxton, which is outside of Worcester, and the city of Fitchburg. She went on to a municipal banking career, as well as myself and Brian Jamros have backgrounds in municipal banking and have been with the company since then. Our investment team is headed by Alex Bartholomew, and he has investment team that he works with. We have Chris Davies, Joshua Paul, and then we have Kevin Blawaki, who is our analyst on staff. And then we have registered assistant and some support staff in the office as well. So that's a little bit about who we are. You get to see faces and put them with the names, which is helpful. And when it comes to the different buckets of money that cities and towns invest, you know, you mentioned stabilization money. About 800 million of the 1.1 billion represents trust fund stabilization CPA money, which we adhere to Mass General Law on the investment of those funds under Chapter 4454. And then OPEB falls under a different chapter of the law, 203(c), which is prudent investor. So I'm going to turn it over to Chuck so he can talk a little bit about.
I'll give a quick summary of what we bid on and how we manage OPEB funds. As Michelle said, we are an independent investment advisor. All of your funds will be separately held in a separate account. It will not be pooled with any other municipality. Then from there, how is it invested? What you'll see in Tab 3, that you all have it open to, is the risk scale. And what we will work with the committee to determine how much risk the town is willing to take. And then you tie that back to, I'm sure you've all seen your actuarial study, and it gives you a discount rate. What we try to do is work with the committee, with the actuary, to come up with an appropriate risk tolerance for the community to get to that discount rate that your actuary told you. Right now, Gasby 45 said you probably had a 4% discount or a 7%. What they're doing is they're going to be combining that number in your next report. So we'll help in organizing the thoughts to determine that risk. So what you'll find in most of our towns, they're moderate risk to aggressive. So a lot of them, probably 80% of those 140 entities that Michelle spoke about, they're landing in that moderate, moderate aggressive area. Those people realizing this is long-term money, 30-year money. So you really need to take risk and make this look very similar to what your pension system is going to look like. So you need to have those higher returns. And then as the fund grows, and we even advise the possibility of getting into private equity, but that's down the road.
Right. So whereas a lot of city and town money is invested for safety and liquidity and yield, OPEB has been completely different for many treasurers across the state to get used to investing for capital appreciation and growth. However, we do feel that our investment models are a little more on the conservative side as it is still municipal funds. It's not our money, it's not the treasurer's money, it's the town's money. And so what's nice is you have the flexibility to move in between the different risk models, as you see fit. Like as Chuck said, most do start in that moderate model with a global equity and a global fixed income allocation, and then we do a 20% allocation to alternatives as well. And we have a philosophy of risk-adjusted return. And simply what that means is that we want to help the portfolio get to the discount rate, the target rate of return that it needs to get to with the least amount of risk and the hopefully the least amount of volatility along the way.
And what that means is you'll see upside and downside capture. And in the market, what that means is you want to capture as much of the upside of the market and as little of the downside of the market. And then you compare all of that to benchmarks that we present to you, and then now you can compare apples to apples. So we've come up with a blended benchmark, as Michelle said, depending on the risk. So that way you can sit there and say, okay, the market did this, you're a part of that, so you'll be able to compare. What you also have in this presentation is an investment policy and sample trust documents. The town already has some of those. We will work through them. If they don't, then we kind of come together with a sound policy that the citizens of the community will be able to fall back to, just making sure they're being cut out.
So we also include in this, under Tab 3, we do include copies of the laws so that they're in there for your reference. So the town has passed Chapter 32b, Section 20, before the Municipal Modernization Act. And my understanding that you intend to pass the new, the updated 32b20.
It's on the special town meeting.
Special town meeting. So that is a two-vote process. The first one is to adopt 32b20 under the new law, and the second vote is for the funds to be invested according to prudent investor. So that's something I'd like to point out.
In the prior law that you had already adopted, it automatically landed 203(c), the prudent investor. Under the new modernization law, the law directs you to take a second vote to authorize the investment of OPEB under the prudent investor law.
So one of the things we do as part of our service is we will come out and meet with the treasurer or any committee that might be in place that would like to meet with us at least once a year, but typically it'll be anywhere from maybe twice a year. We have some municipalities that really only want to see us once a year, some like to see us quarterly. We're happy to be here as much or as little as you would like us to. It's really just a preference we find out with a lot of treasurers, twice a year is usually sufficient. So what we do is we provide, if you look under Tab 6, we have, we provide a municipal accounting report to you that we reconcile back to the custodial statement, and we provide this to the treasurer by the fifth business day following a month end, a quarter end, and then we give you a fiscal year summary as well after June 30th. And this simply just tracks all your beginning principal and earnings. We track your cash value as well as your market value for you. It just saves the treasurer a lot of steps in keeping track of these numbers, and you can also break out different line items if you have different entities within town that you would like to keep track of separately. So a lot of our treasurers find a lot of value in this, not only with OPEB, but typically too with other types of medical question, we get into that. So we will come out, we will review the performance of the account, we will have someone from our investment team with us and talk about the markets and the economy, just what's going on out there so that everyone has a decent understanding of what's going on, why things are happening, and addressing any questions or concerns that may come up along the way. In this binder, we do give you a sample of what our performance reporting looks like, just so you can kind of see what we'll be looking at when we do come out to review this account. Under Tab 8, we actually include our municipal client reference list. So these are all municipal entities that have signed off on the privacy release, to be listed here. We find that most are happy to be on here. Treasurers really don't mind speaking to other treasurers. Sometimes we might have an interim treasurer or a part-time treasurer that just chooses not to be on here, because they might be in the in-between, or they're just there so rarely on a part-time basis, they're not here. But most are happy to answer any questions or take a phone call. The legalist column incorporates trust fund stabilization CPA money that we manage under Chapter 4454, and then of course you can see the communities that we're working with on OPEB. And the last tab is our fee schedule. So there are two ways that advisors get paid in this industry. It can either be markup and commission, where there's no fee charge, but there's a fee that is, there's a markup or commission that they make every time a trade is placed, or it could be fee-based. One is not wrong or right, it's a preference about which situation is best for each client. We choose to work on a fee-based basis. We feel it is very straightforward. We also discount our fees for municipalities. In the industry, you might hear somewhere around 1% as an average fee, but we reduce that as municipal entities are not revenue-producing ones, and we're interested in a long-term relationship, and we work with them on such a large scale. So these fees are all-encompassing. This includes all custodial charges, investment services, ticket charges, wire transfer fees, everything. There's no fee above and beyond what you see here. It's an annual fee that is broken down into quarterly amounts. It's charged, those quarterly amounts are charged the first month of each quarter, and it's netted right out of the earnings of the account. These fees also go back to dollar one. It's based on total relationships. So when we have a community that we are working with other money, all the accounts benefit together. We look at it as one collective whole. And it goes back to dollar one, meaning it's not tiered. It's not like you pay a certain fee for the first 2 million and then another fee for the next. It's all encompassing.
So in this case here, the town's OPEB funds would be at quarterly basis points.
Any questions?
I have one question. Now, on your exposure to risk scale, is it possible to split the town's exposure to risk, for example, OPEB, because it's a long-term exposure, would be set at one level versus maybe if we did stabilization with you also? That's more of a turnaround? That'd be a different risk level? Is that?
Yes, those are two separate, they would be in two separate accounts, and you could set the risk profiles differently for both. When it comes to stabilization money, we adhere to the Massachusetts Legalist of Investments, so it looks very different than the OPEB account. It's a little less exciting.
Is your fees based on the entire amount that's deposited with you, or is it based on if OPEB's one amount, that's charged a different, one fee, and if stabilization's in another account, that's a different fee?
Okay. What we try to do is, I said in our committee meeting, that we always try to do whatever is best for the community. So depending on the scale versus the other non-OPEB scale, we always, we do the calculation internally to make sure it's the most cost-effective to the community.
Because eventually, some of these relationships get to a point where you're hitting, the fee schedules are the same once you get up to 6 million, and then it just, right, because we do have some communities where.
So it's always in the best interest of the community. To try to make every dime on one account versus the other, look at the total relationship and make the right decision.
Right. Our stabilization accounts are a lot larger than our OPEB account right now, so that's why I was.
And when you asked about the stabilization account, as Michelle said, that falls under Chapter 4454, the legalness would be very, very, and when you look at the risk scale, it's probably down as preservation of capital versus this is a lot higher than the risk scale.
Anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
That is a good question. Do you want to make a motion now, or do you want to consider it first? What's the Board's pleasure?
It's the one being forwarded by the financial management team, right?
The finance team did meet with all three. Based upon our meetings with the three, they were the best in terms of service, in terms of the fee structure, in terms of what they have to offer, in terms of their experience in other communities.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to go with Bartholomew for our OPEB and possibly our stabilization accounts.
You want to just do the OPEB first, and then we'll reconsider on stabilization, see how they do with OPEB?
Sure. Whatever the team, so let's face it.
That's second, Charlie?
I'll second it, yes.
Motion being seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discuss fiscal year 19 budgets, planning board, town administrator's budget, and capital budgets. Planning, anybody here from planning?
You.
Nope. Not my job. Do we have anything from planning with their budget request? Was there an increase?
Kim?
There's an increase in their budget because it was originally the position was going to be land administrator at Step 4.
Right.
So if you folks are appointing a new employee, that person is starting as a Step 1.
Technician.
And as a technician. So you could, in theory, reduce the personnel request. It's at 53,127 now. You could reduce it to 33,975. That would be the annual salary for a Step 1 technician. And the expenses were all level funded from the previous year.
You give that number 1, the new number?
The new number would be $33,975.
That was formerly the 52, 754?
53,127.
I know that Kevin has some questions about the attending of the meetings and the comp time or how it happens. I'm wondering if we want to leave any, do we want to cut it down to 33,975 or leave the new way? Bob would have a little bit of.
That'll be covered by, he's in the union contracts, so that'll be covered by union contracts, so.
Whether he's getting comp time versus.
Right, and that stuff that you're clearing up.
That'll be negotiations, so.
Right.
Yeah. He doesn't have a recommendation. Kevin didn't send us anything from the planning board or a recommendation? I don't know, we'll have to consider what we can do with that. If we're going to leave a little bit in there, or we're just going to go with the 33,975? If we have to fund it down the road, we have to fund it down the road. That makes sense.
Yeah, let's think about that.
Yeah, okay.
Let's see where we are, where we're done with that.
It's only a request right now. What was the next? Town administrator.
Basically, it's a small decrease of the previous year. It's like $15,000 less than it was in the previous year because of changing costs associated with positions in the administrator's office. Other things in the office are pretty much level funded from the prior year. There's no major increases or changes.
Because we were carrying an extra position, and now we're not having that position anymore, so that's why it went down?
Yeah, that's basically.
Okay.
Okay. And last one?
Capital projects. We did add two things on since the last time when Scott was in. As a result of our discussions on the schoolhouse and the use of it as a storage facility, we added $25,000 into the capital projects budget to allow us to do some electrical work in there as well as provide a way to insulate it so that it'll be made, so that it, actually, reduce moisture in, it's in the basement, there are little tiny holes that allow things, air infiltration. So he had suggested, Scott had suggested putting foam in there. I'm going to examine that and see if that's the best option in terms of sealing and allowing us to keep the records that have been going in there dry, as well as some lights and things like that.
And a new door.
New door from the outside, yeah.
So that's it, 25?
25 on that. And then we added $40,000 based on early discussions that we had regarding the town hall generator and the need to have it generated there. What we're going to do on that, we put 40,000 in, but between now and town meeting, we'll research that in terms. we'll research that in terms of actual cost and we'll present the board with a final number. It won't be more than the forty thousand. I'm hoping that it's going to be less.
Seems awfully high.
Yeah. It could be, it could be, once again, we just, based upon some discussions that we had, it was suggested forty thousand dollars, but we'll, we'll firm up that number between now and town meeting so that we could reduce that.
Well, it's got to be done way before town meeting, so, I mean, within the next, when?
Oh, yeah, we could, yeah.
When are we finalizing the budget?
Twenty, we have to finalize by the twenty-seventh. What's that next meeting?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Then we need to know that in two weeks.
Sorry, I can have that on the line.
Right, you should be able to just reach out to a, a logician that does it, see what you need is, and then from there, what you, what size generator and what you need to feed it.
It's going to be a big generator. I know that in other installations, you know, the power building, the size of the town hall, it's a pretty substantial. And then we need a transfer switch in order to, or permanently hotwire transfer switches and whether we're going to make a gas connection or use propane, I guess.
There's no gas there.
Propane.
Okay. What else is on here?
That's basically it. Everything else is based previously.
Did we put, Gary's?
Station, station improvements on here?
Yes.
Well, which station?
Go ahead.
It's not station one. There's improvements on that for station two.
Station two.
Station two, yeah, white line and some, like painting and repairing.
But station one, we don't have a hot estimate for station one. That's just a.
That's going to be an article in the fall.
A fall article? We don't usually like to do money articles in the fall, but.
Right.
Without doing a hard, really don't know, we don't, we don't know what we're carrying, so we have to have somebody look at it.
Right.
So that'll have to be.
Gary, do you have a timeline on that? Do you know when you're going to have?
We'll still get it back from P and D.
Okay.
As far as the estimated, a jar and the design of the front of the building. We don't have a, I can't give you the timeline, I don't know.
So when the fall?
We've got some plan, we're looking, looking to fall to, probably fall town meeting, they get the money approved to redesign the front of the building.
It's not going to be able to come out of the capital budget, not to come to the capital stake in a mission at that point then?
Right.
All right.
Follows will have a hot number and I just want to know an arbitrary number, right?
And we do have an article that's on the town meeting warrant for a lawnmower for the cemetery department and the amount of approximately six thousand dollars.
That should be an equipment.
Yeah, Kim and I were talking about that today. We feel it should be a capital.
It should be an equipment and then that way we can track it just like we've tracked the last lawnmower that they bought.
Well, they need to submit it with the budget.
Right. I don't know why it's in an article.
Why, why would it be a separate article? Just for a moment?
I don't know, you have that for town.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on budgets? Here are none. Discussion approval articles for insertion to the special town meeting.
Should we have card copies?
They should be in print. You should have a copy.
I got it.
Do I read this whole thing?
No, we can just go in order. Which one are we on?
We're starting with special.
Special, okay.
Article one. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire the fee in and through the parcel of land located at Beechwood Road in the sonnet at the Lakeville Town Line southeast of Horse Pond Swamp. Said parcel shown on Assessors Map two oh one as lot four by deed in lieu of foreclosure pursuant to provisions of General Laws, chapter sixty, section seventy-seven C for general municipal purposes and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Treasurer. Request a majority vote. So it appears, which treasurer's right there. So it appears this isn't tax title, is that what it was?
It is. It's a small piece of land. It was with the house across the street and when they sold the house, a piece of land was just left. They don't want the property, they're not going to pay the taxes. It'll save us money to do it this way. I've spoken with him, he said he'd sign the deed.
So this is consent for the property?
And I think conservation is going to, it does another article there?
Yeah, it's under number two.
Okay. I'll take a motion to accept the article one. Or do you want to wait until they're?
Yeah, we'll wait until we get to the end, then we'll accept them or not accept them all.
Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management and control of that parcel of land on Beechwood Road at the Lakeville Town Line southeast of Horse Pond Swamp shown in Assessors Map two oh one as lot four by the, from the Board of Selectmen, the general municipal purposes of Conservation Commission under the provisions of section eight C of chapter forty of General Laws and further to dedicate and designate the parcel for conservation purposes subject to the protections of article ninety-seven of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution submitted by Conservation Commission requires a majority vote. Any questions on that? Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of six, sixty-five hundred dollars for the removal of trees at the Motherbrook Cemetery and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by Cemetery Commission, require a majority vote.
Why is this on special and not annual? They, that's how they submitted it as special?
And the only option is stabilization. There's no other available funding for special.
Right.
Why, why would we take this out stabilization? It should be on the annual.
It should be on the annual.
And it goes out of the budget.
I don't understand, I'm sorry, I'm not, I just don't understand.
Yeah, I think it should go to annual.
Yeah, thanks. Usually we use special for things that have to be done in this fiscal year.
Right. Article four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of three thou, three hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-six cents in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of paying for prior fiscal year bill to W.B. Mason for supplies to be funded from the certified retained earnings of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by Sewer and Water Commissioners.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Requires a nine tenths vote. Article five, Charlie, you have any questions with that?
Nope.
Article five, see if the.
I see.
Okay. I didn't want to skip over.
No, no.
To see if the town will vote to re, to re-accept the provisions of chapter thirty-two B, section twenty of Massachusetts General Laws to amend by chapter tw, two eighteen, section fifteen of the Acts of two thousand and sixteen, under which the town has established the and other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, the OPEB fund, for which the Treasurer serves as custodian and designates the Treasurer custodian as the trustee of the OPEB fund with all the powers and responsibilities identified under the Act and this vote and authorize Treasurer custodian as Treasurer, as trustee to employ, invest, consult, consultants as well as outside custodial services to hold the monies in fund and to pay for those services from the OPEB fund and authorize the investment of the OPEB fund under the prudent investors rule established in General Law, chapter two oh three C and authorize the Treasurer custodian as Treasury, as trustee, I'm sorry, to execute any and all documents necessary to utilize outside custodial services and/or investment consultants, including but not limited to trust agreements, participation agreements, investment agreements, administrative services agreements, and design, designate the Treasurer custodian as the planning administrator as may be necessary to utilize outside custodial services and authorize the Treasurer custodian acting as planning administrator.
There's been a motion to waive the reading.
To take it.
There's a motion to waive everything.
Push your hat. Too many other actions permitted by law submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote.
Yes, that's fine.
Don't say, no, I wouldn't change something because I'm not really in the.
One of the reasons, this is actually on the special town meeting because it has to be enacted during this fiscal year.
Right.
The Bartholomew representatives did make mention of the two process vote.
Yeah, but it's already in here because you've got.
I know, I saw, I saw the prudent, prudent investor.
Prudent investments rolled all into one, so.
Legal counsel is very expedited.
This article's actually written by counsel.
Okay. Article six, any other questions on that one?
No.
Thank God. Article six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unused funds appropriated at the June fifth, two thousand and seventeen annual town meeting under article six of the South Main Street Water and Treatment Filtration System to capital stabilization account and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commissioners requires a majority vote.
What's that?
All right.
The motion to approve the articles that we just went over.
And move article three.
Second it?
Motion being second, any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now the annual town meeting. Monday, June fourth, seven thirty P.M. Article one, to see if the town will vote, article one, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and transfer such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the town charges the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen via general, general government, public safety, health and human services, public works, education, cultural recreation, interest and principal debt, town widening, wide fueling and unclassified, syrup head assessment, retirement insurance, medical care and transfer capital, capital equipment, capital budget and other property improvements and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote, basically the ominous budget. Everybody okay with the wording of that?
Yeah.
Article two, to see if the town will vote to fix the summer, the salary of, the salary and compensation of elected offices, the town of Free Town as provided by chapter forty-one, section one oh eight of the General Laws as amended for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and take any action relative thereto. Figures indicate salaries, annual salaries or hourly pay rates. The moderator is asking, was at four twenty, he's asking for four thirty-two. The Board of Selectmen is at six thousand each, that remains unchanged. The town clerk is fifty-five thousand, she's requesting fifty-six thousand, one hundred.
We haven't voted on any of these budgets, so.
Any of these budgets.
So I would just say, I'm good with the article, but the monetary amounts might change.
Okay.
Are you good with that? When we start doing, going over the budgets, these may change.
These may change, right.
But we're good with the article itself.
All right. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of nine thousand dollars, nine hun, nine thousand, nine hundred dollars, that's nine thousand, nine hundred dollars from, for the P case valuation software license and web hosting and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Assessors, requires a majority vote.
What's that?
Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to pay the third and final installment of fiscal seventeen through nineteen route revaluation program and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Town Board of Assessors.
Oh, good.
Requires a majority vote. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of two thousand dollars to pay the public purpose of supporting the sexual assault and domestic violence program of the New Bedford Women's Center and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote.
Good.
Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of six thousand, five hundred dollars, six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of updating a three-year actuary, other, other post-employment benefits, OPEB study and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Treasurer requires a majority vote.
Good.
Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars to fund the cost of site evaluation, engineering and design services and project management services for the design of town, a new town library, including but not limited to the schematic design and any cost incidental and relative and related thereto and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an, any agreement and execute all documents, including contracts for a term in excess of three years necessary to effect, effectuate the purposes of this article and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the library trustees requires a two-thirds vote. You know.
No.
We're, we're going through a building committee?
Yeah.
This should have been sent to the building committee, not put on this.
They, they were a part of the building committee and then they left.
Absolutely were.
And then went off and did this on their own and.
I can, we, we have a way to do this.
It should go through the proper channel.
Okay.
So we'll be, we'll be striking article seven with, when we vote?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have that, Ellen? Thank you. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of money for the purpose of purchasing a yearly citizen notification system for the town residents to opt in to receive telephone or text messages for town notifications and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote.
Yeah, I think it's going to cost us around four thousand dollars, but it all depends on how many people are going to.
Opt in.
Opt in, and I think we're going to, the way we're going to do it is put it on the census, so when they return the census, so we don't have to even pay for an extra.
So they'll check off a box and write their number that they want to be contacted at?
Yeah.
All right.
We did, we did get some votes in today regarding that. One auction was thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-three hundred for fifteen messages a year.
Perfect.
Four thousand residences.
That's only one ahead of household, though, so you only get one per household.
One per household.
And then five thousand was an expanded auction.
Yeah, five thousand for twenty-five.
Twenty-five messages, not an extra people.
Yeah.
You can always add on if we need a second one, you can always add on with the year.
You can do, like, if you go over the messages, you can buy additional.
Rather have some in the mail.
Fifteen's good.
All right. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars to fund the Free Town portion of the dump truck for the Free Town Lakeville School District. The total cost of the truck and plow was fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by Fred Baker, Director of Finance for the School Committee, requires a majority vote. Why doesn't they just put this in their budget?
My, my, it's exactly, I've never seen anything like this before.
They haven't done anything like this before?
No.
The only time they've ever done.
No, they should have just put this in their budget and it would have been funded through their budget.
I think the other town wanted them to do it separately, that's probably why, so, but we can just put it back in their budget and just go from there.
Right.
You want it? I'm fine with that.
I see a problem with this because of precedent.
Yeah. Are you good with that?
Good.
All right.
So strikes an article nine?
Yep.
Article ten, to see if the town will vote to, in accordance with the General Laws, chapter one fifteen, section nine, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of five hundred dollars for the maintenance of veterans' graves and or take any action relative thereto submitted by Cemetery Commission, requires a majority vote.
Yeah.
Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fifteen, fifteen hundred dollars for the sale of cemetery lots account, from the sale of cemetery lots account to be used by the Cemetery Commission for improvements to the sonnet burial ground. This will include surveying and existing prepared land, marking out lots, clearing new areas, performing maintenance and improving roads and access and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Cemetery Commission, requires a majority vote.
Yeah.
Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of six thousand, three hundred, forty-four dollars and three cents for the purpose of a new lawnmower for use for the sonnet burial ground and at, other town properties and/or take any actions relative thereto.
No, I say put it into the capital equipment budget.
Slide that into the ominous capital budget.
Yeah.
Well, it can be tracked that way, we know where.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars to fund the cost of site evaluation, engineering and design services for the design of a sewer extension study for a sonnet, including but not limited to schematic design and any cost incidental and related thereto and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement and execute all documents, including contracts, for the term in excess of three years necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commissioners requires a majority vote.
And I don't think we're going to have to take it out of our budget because the state[1769.41] And I don't think we're gonna have to take it out of our budget because the state approved a bond, bond money for us.
For 30,000.
Yep.
So we might still need the $2,900, $2,900, but the vast majority will come from the state.
Come from the state, so that's awesome.
All right. Everybody's good with the article as written though?
Yeah. So are we gonna keep the sum of 32,900?
Just in case the state doesn't come through, I would keep it in here and then at the end we can put the 30,000 back in if it doesn't get spent, just like we did with the water money.
Yep, okay.
Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of $17,500 for the purchase of land from the Roman Catholic Bishop, Roman Catholic Bishop of Fall River, a corporation sole, a parcel of land located at 15 Bullock Road, Free Town, Massachusetts, referred on the town assessors' record as map 239, parcel 27 for municipal purposes, and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
So two parcels, parcel 27 and 20, the same amount though, right?
I thought this was all wet.
There is a little bit of upland right around the border, but most of it's wet. But if we need to expand parking area, fire station, the septic for the fire station, we have room under that.
The septic is, septic if I remember correctly is.
Suspect.
But we're gonna be able to do septic in a building?
No, there is buffer zone, it's not wetland.
Yeah. So it's, you're getting about, I think about five or six thousand square feet.
And if we need to do something else, we have some land there to do something else. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to approve the sum of $873,206.52 to operate the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2019 with an appropriation of the following direct expense, personnel, $86,611.52, expenses, $711,450, for a total of $798,61.52 in the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the sum of $75,145 for the indirect cost appropriated in the general fund as part of the ominous budget with all amounts totaling $873,206.52, funding the Water Sewer Enterprise, receipts taken, or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Water and Sewer Commissioners, requires a majority vote.
All right.
Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to accept the roadway entitled Marie's Way in the entirety with the utility and all other apprement easements for a length of to be determined fee, or take any other action relative thereto, see plans entitled Street Acceptance Plan to be determined, prepared by place engineering, place engineer here, okay? Is that supposed to be highlighted for me?
I don't think you need to read it, it's what, Marx Lane, John Philip Drive, Christopher Drive, and Brewster Drive.
Yep, we got it.
Christopher and Brewster, that's all to be determined, but we had all the layouts for this last year, you just didn't make it in time to make the warrant.
And you didn't have a recommendation from the planning board in time, so.
So we have a recommendation from the planning board now?
We just got the letter today.
Okay.
Submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires majority vote.
Good.
Okay.
Chuck, have you looked at this to make sure it's in good condition and stuff since, you're fine with the way it is, there's no sinkholes anymore on the bridge or anything?
It's peachy keen, everything's good.
Okay. Note that the highway inspector says it's peachy keen. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into the tax exempt lease purchase financing agreement with Ford Motor Company, LLC to acquire equipment specifically police cruisers that may be financed by the issuance of a debt under this chapter and otherwise authorized by law for a term up to the useful life of the property, specifically three years, to be procured as determined by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), and furthermore, the sum needed to satisfy the fiscal year payment of this agreement will be separately identified, raised, and appropriated in the capital budget special section of the ominous budget fiscal year 19, or take any action relative thereto submitted by police chief, requires a two-thirds vote. Article Eighteen, you're all set. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax exempt lease financing agreement with All American Investment Group, LLC to acquire a fire apparatus that may be financed by the issuance of debt under this chapter or otherwise authorized by law for a term of its useful life of the property, specifically five years, to be procured as determined by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), and furthermore, the sum needed to satisfy the first year payment of this agreement will be separately identified, raised, and appropriated in the capital budget section of the ominous budget fiscal year 19, or take any action relative thereto submitted by fire chief, requires a two-thirds vote. Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of Section 8L of Chapter 40 of the Mass. General Laws, and establish an agricultural commission consisting of five members to advocate for farmers, farm business, farm interests, and assist farmers in resolving municipal problems or conflicts related to farming, and for other related purposes outlined in the statute, and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board requires majority vote.
I guess.
Article, I don't know.
Right.
Article Twenty, do we have many farms left? Article Twenty, to see if the town will vote. To see if the, turn my house on the phone. Turn, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Free Town General Bylaws, Article Twenty-four, Article 24.2, substances pumped onto street. I don't think that means article, that should be Section 24.2 of this general bylaws, right? Substances pumped onto a street by deleting the last sentence, penalties presently provided by Article 18, Section 18.14 apply to this section, and adding penalties presently provided by Article 25, subsection 25.2 will apply to the section and take any action relative thereto submitted by Board of Health requires majority vote. I believe this is just, it references the wrong chapter in the penalties, so the penalties can't be assessed, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Article Twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to delete Article 30 of its general bylaws relative to numbers of recreational marijuana establishments, and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Planning Board requires a majority vote. The jeopardy of doing that is if a article, if a petition article comes up at any town meeting or general, or special town meeting or annual town meeting, we won't have anything in place that would limit them to just the one recreational facility. Where currently we have in the bylaws, even though we also have a bylaws that outlaws it, we currently only have allowed one if it ever did change. If we take this out and there's an article brought forward to change, to open up and allow recreational marijuana, it would be unlimited if we take these out. So I don't know the Board's pleasure, but.
But it was submitted by the Planning Board, so was the majority of the Planning Board telling you they wanted to submit it?
I wasn't at a vote that was taken for this, so I can't speak to them.
Why don't we leave it on there, but if we have to withdraw it, we will.
All right. Article Twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to delete Article 11, Section 11.34 of its protective bylaws relative to the number of recreational marijuana establishments, and/or take any action relative thereto.
Same outcome.
Same thing, just different section.
Yeah, I'd like to know why Town Council is suggesting that we do it too.
Right.
All right.
Can you reach out to them tomorrow and see what the rationale is behind it? It may be just because it's double talk, but it gives us a layer of protection in my opinion that we wouldn't have if it's not there. Article Twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to add to the Town of Free Town Protective Bylaws, municipal noise, bylaw Article 30.1, 30.2, 30.3, 30.4, 30.5, 30.6, 30.7, 30.8, 30.9, as on file with the Town Clerk's Office, submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote.
I don't know.
Wait, I don't remember submitting this.
Is this why?
So I asked them to put the bylaw on because if we don't have the bylaw, we're gonna be having, we could have another situation like we did down on the end of Leonard Street. This bylaw gives us the opportunity to delineate what is noise, what would be a violation, what would be the standard for violation of noise for disturbing the peace or anything like that.
Would this interfere with any of our, does this interfere with any of our current bylaws?
No. Matter of fact, it was filed from the Planning Board a while back.
Oh, you had that?
A year or so we looked at something, but we didn't go forward with it because it was, it was a lot of arbitrary stuff in it, so the Planning Board voted, it was too arbitrary. There's nothing that speaks to anything hard, it's basically up to the decision of the person that listens to the noise, whether it's.
Does it need more work?
That's why.
Do you want to keep working on this?
That's why the Planning Board.
Put it on for October, or?
You're asking me a specific question.
I did ask you a specific question.
Oh, I was just saying that's why the Planning Board didn't take it, that doesn't mean this board can't take it.
No, that doesn't, but does it need, do we need to look at it and, has Town Council looked at this?
I don't know.
Anybody?
I sent it to Town Council about an month and a half ago, they haven't gotten back, yeah, haven't gotten back to it. So I don't know how far they are into it, I don't know if they're gonna be able to get on or not.
Is this the same exact draft that you submitted to the Planning Board the last year?
It was, yeah, it was the one that Warren had developed.
I think the concept is good. I haven't even had time to look at this.
I read it over, I thought that was something that was already in place that we were just tweaking, I didn't realize that this is a total new addition.
I mean, it is, it is the general, like disturbing of the peace bylaw which mirrors mess law. This would articulate more clearly what can be considered noise and what's not to be considered a disturbing noise.
So some noise, any noise which emanates from any building, boat, structure, vehicle, premises, or sound, any sound notification system which is plainly audible at a distance of 150 feet.
Right.
Is that a lawnmower, something along that?
No, it would only pertain to things within a certain period of time, such as after 8:00 PM and before 7:00 AM for that. And there's, as you can see on what is actually 33, it has limits also because of such things as commercial trash collection, electronic devices such as instruments, things like that. So the, the method behind this is to more, to articulate what is disturbing the peace for noise, because Massachusetts law just says disturbing the peace, that's basically what it is. It's up to the facts and the circumstances to articulate when arrested or any type of charge. So the bylaw would give you a clearer picture of what's a noise violation. And it would allow police to enforce it as a criminal offense instead of just having a noise.
And this needs a review from the Planning Board though, correct, to go forward, because this is a planning change and doesn't the Planning Board require any zoning change to have a public hearing on this prior to the meeting?
Say it's not a planning.
This is a general.
This is general.
This is a general bylaw.
So this isn't gonna go into the zoning bylaw, protected zoning bylaw?
No, this is a general bylaw.
Generally, we try to keep these articles in the fall and do money articles in the spring in the summer, but I mean.
We don't have much on the agenda, there's articles.
What, are you crazy?
No, no.
We're gonna be there till midnight.
If we're 25 articles.
All right, we'll keep it up and I'll review it.
I think Town Council's gonna look at it.
And we'll, to make a decision, hard decision on the 21st.
You have to make for that for the warrants, the warrants have to be posted by the 18th.
I'll stand motion, keep it up, well, we'll do that when we do the last motion, we'll take everything. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to explore the possibility of creating a solar farm at the Free Town Transfer Station on 49 Holland Road, and to put a request for proposals, RFP, to energy companies to develop the site for said purposes and to allow the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement with a solar vendor for a period of up to 10 years, and/or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote.
Yes. The only thing, David, do you know if in general they would go as short as 10 years? Because my understanding, most of them are more like the 20-year range.
I could follow up and have.
I mean, I don't have.
I put 10 years down because I, one of the companies I had talked to about what they proposed out, I don't know whether all of them. We've actually had three inquiries about the transfer stations since I've been here, so there definitely is an interest.
My only thing is 10 would limit us to 10, where you might be better off with 20.
We could change it to 20 and it's a period of up to, so if the agreement was 10, then that would suffice if you want to make that change.
I don't know. Do we want to make that change here, or?
You can go up to 20.
Up to 20.
And then if it's only 10, then it's only, then up to covers that.
But I just think that 20 might look.
It is 20, most of them, at least.
Look a little bit more interesting than 10.
Any problems with that, you also have that?
Yeah.
Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate sum of, for the purpose of supplementing the capital stabilization fund, or take any action relative thereto. Do we have any general idea what money's gonna be left over at the end? Okay. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of, to be determined by, for the proposal of supplementing the stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto, requires majority vote.
Wow, we got the double zeros tonight.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept the articles with the notations changed, or?
At the Board's pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve as changed. The only thing is, is that we are gonna need to know about Article 23 and whether we're gonna get any recommendation from Town Council.
Currently as changed though is striking Article Seven and striking Article 12, is that, and Article Nine, is that correct?
Seven, 12 is gonna be moved to.
Moved to.
Moved, and then Article Nine's gonna be moved as well, so, yeah, I'm good.
Article Nine got moved, I thought we were striking that from.
Striking it from here, but.
It's gonna go in their budget.
If it's gonna go in their budget, it's gonna go in their budget.
School budget, okay, all right. But it's not gonna go to our.
No, 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 no.
That's why.
Nope, nope, nope. And then 12 goes into our capital equipment budget, and then Article 14, we just have to add parcel number 28 on there. And then Article 20, just the, where it says Article 24.2, that needs to be changed. And I think that's it. The only other thing that we're gonna change is when we're reviewing budgets, the, the amounts might change, so.
For the.
In Article Two.
Article, yeah, Article Two for the inquiries.
But other than that, we're good.
Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second and discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Carriage unanimous. Frequent public discussion, anybody here who we should pull up for discussion?
Yeah, is Excel suing the town?
Currently we are in litigation with Excel.
Do they have a money, money figure on it, or no?
No.
Nothing yet. And you guys are personally getting sued, each other?
I believe we are. Anything else? Okay. Consent agenda. Approved Chapter 90 final request from South Main Street, Gurnee Road, Washburn Road, and Narrows Road, as submitted by Highway Severa Charles McComber.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Three projects, Gurnee Road, Gurnee Road was, we were approved for $48,957, we did the project for $47,868.58. Washburn Road was approved for $70,859.70, we did the project for $78,334.95. South Main Street. South Main Street was approved for thirty-six thousand thirty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. We did the project for thirty-four thousand two ninety-eight fifty-two. Last but not least, is Narrows Road was resurfaced. It's approved for ninety-seven thousand six oh six thirty-five, and we did the project for ninety-four thousand six ninety-three oh six.
What's remaining in that budget? That's, that was it?
Uh, last year, we, last year's money, we had basically a hundred thousand dollars left. This year, we got three ninety-six and change, so, you know, we're looking at basically five hundred thousand dollars to play with this year. Majority of that money's already gonna be eaten up on two drainage projects on Oak Lawn Road and Cliff Drive. They're waiting to get prices from GPI and duty engineering and, you know, estimates on them. And who knows what's next? You know, I don't, I have no idea how much money's gonna be left after those projects.
entertain a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted by the Highway Surveyor.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign them, whatever. I'll pick them up tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Prove into departmental transfer from health insurance to union pension as submitted by treasurer collector. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, make that transfer requested.
Send it to the, uh, finance committee?
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye, Josh.
Review and consideration of open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins and discuss proposed response to complaint.
I think town council's got it under control.
Yeah. I recommend we follow, follow the complaint to town council and follow their advice.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, send to town council, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Discuss letter sent from town moderator regarding special annual town meeting on June fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
Did he check that out with Jackie?
You mean, Mike, I would have assumed.
All right.
I have no.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, as long as it works with...
He's in charge of the town meeting.
As long as it works with Jackie, um, as far as, uh, the color, color coordinating pages.
Kind of makes sense, yes.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. Um...
I don't know if her budget supports colored paper, but...
And I should print them.
Hmm?
I print them, he doesn't.
Oh, you print them? I don't know if Bob would just support it, colored paper.
Yeah, that's fine with me. His changes are fine. I don't have a problem with that. How about you?
I'm good.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion. We, uh, we recommend to Michael, uh, the cue that he does as he so desires here.
Oh, I'm not gonna go that far.
No, let's not say that.
Well, we just...
Let's, let's let Allie print them and color paper.
Hold it back a little bit.
In this particular moment, in this particular item, not...
Let's let Allie coordinate with Jackie to make sure it's the right color. How's that?
Sure.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Letter from Mr. and Mrs. Scott regarding the intent to remove forty-six East Holland Road map two nineteen, lot fourteen, from chapter sixty-one A, and the town's right to first refusal. Have we looked at that lot?
Uh, we, uh, we have. I haven't personally looked at the lot, but we did send it out to the partners to ask for their input on it. I don't recall seeing anything that would indicate that there was any interest in that. However, we did consult council regarding it, and the notice provided by the Scotts regarding withdrawal from sixty-one A doesn't comply with the requirements of Mass General Law sixty-one, section eight, because the notice of intent to sell for other use needs to be accompanied by a statement of an intent to sell or propose use of the land, a location and acreage as shown on a map drawn to the scale of the assessors' map. Uh, the notice should also include a certified copy of an executed purchase and sale agreement, as well as other, um, if the, any notice of intent for sale of other use shall be accompanied by additional agreements or statements for consideration of any contiguous land under the same ownership and not classified under this chapter, but can be sold contemporarily, contemporaneously with the proposed sale. And a bona fide offer means a, a good faith offer, not dependent upon potential changes. So as a result, in the opinion of council, this notice doesn't trigger the right of first refusal and does not begin the timeline for the, the exercise of such right.
So if the town, if the board's appetite is to give them the refusal, we could stipulate that they be received the correct form, in the correct format, and then the refusal would be granted.
I, I don't know. Has anybody, have they spoken at all to the board of assessors? Because I think, um, the board of assessors also has to get involved.
Yeah, in the sixty-one A, they're gonna have to pay all the back taxes for it.
Yeah, some rollback taxes.
Go back, there's a rollback.
Right. That's required on the statute.
It says if the owners do not continue to, uh, do not seek to continue to classify this land into sixty-one, the town will have to, will have a right of first refusal and an option to purchase for a period of up to one year from the period that was last assessed their own. With respect to rollback taxes, please note provision sixty, general on sixty-one, section seven, which states if, at the time during a tax year when a change in land use has occurred and the land has not valued, assessed, or taxed under this chapter, then the land shall be subject to rollback taxes only for those years of the five immediately preceding years in which the land was valued and assessed and taxed under this chapter. If the owners do nothing with their land, after removal, rollback taxes can, can be collected only if there's a change in use. So if it reverses something else...
So I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I'll send it.
So the board's pleasure is to allow the first, or all refusal, as long as we get it formatted correctly from the...
Yes, exactly.
By state statutes. Is that a second, Charlie?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Signed agreement with stop and shop for the use of the bypass road for the annual Fourth of July parade. Green date is July seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Have we had any complaints or issues with them, with us? Okay.
So I'll see you both there?
Yep.
Yep.
Bell's on.
I'm not gonna blow bells, though. Charlie can blow bells.
Yeah.
Uh, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, signed the agreement with, uh, stop and shop.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a sign approved Sunday, entertainment license for Saint John Newman Church on Sunday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, for the Lakeside Family Festival. Have we had any problems with Lakeside Family Festival complaints? No.
Has Scott going down there, or is Scott gonna go down there and, um, inspect?
Both he and Derek go down, should go down every year.
Right.
Inspector and help each other down every year.
That'll be a new one for you, because you haven't been there before, Rick, Derek.
I've already had a couple of them. I had one meeting with them and then another discussion last week. They're in good shape already, so...
Okay.
We'll be fine.
They've been doing it for twenty years, thirty years, so...
No, we're, we're already on a good, a good, full of progress, so...
Perfect.
Make a motion that we... Okay?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, uh, to issue the license to, uh, Saint John Newman Parish.
Uh, second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Discuss vote on declaration of land at fifteen Bullock Road as submitted by the town administrator. Mr. Administrator?
The Mass General Law thirty-B call for, um, uh, the declaration of the uniqueness of the property. Generally, for town wanting to purchase a property, it has to do an RFP and specifically state what the purchases are and what we want to use it for, and vendors or landowners can bid for that use. However, in a situation like this, for real property acquisition, if your governmental body determines in writing that advertising for proposals would not be in the interest of the governmental body because of unique qualities or location of the property needed, a written determination must specify the manner in which the property satisfies the unique requirements, and a determination must be published in the central register along with the names of the parties for the beneficial interests in the property to be acquired in the terms of the agreement now, so thirty days before entering into a binding agreement of the property. This property is the property we talked about earlier regarding, um, the land that's adjacent to the fire station, and it is unique in that it is adjacent to the fire station and presents an opportunity to expand or use the land for other municipal purposes. So what I did is I put together that. I don't know if you want to read that as a declaration of the unique...
Yes. The board of selectmen had the meeting held on Monday, May seventh, two thousand and eighteen, declares that a property located at five Bullock Road...
Fifteen.
Fifteen Bullock Road. Have Allie proofread. Fifteen Bullock Road, Free Town, Mass, is unique because it is adjacent to the fire station number two, number three, and is represents an opportunity to expand the area adjacent to the publicly owned property. As a result of this determination, the board will not procure this acquisition in accordance with Mass General Law thirty-B and will attempt this property, or exempt this property from the completed procurement...
It should be competitive.
I thought so. Competitive procurement process. The board has placed an article on the two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting to purchase this property directly for the, from the diocese of Fall River for the sum of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Okay. Do I have a motion, um, to go ahead with the purview?
I'll make a motion that we assign the declaration.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, assign the declaration. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town administrator's report.
I'll have a few things. One is to let the board know that DCR is in the process of working on the closing on the property and proprietor's way. Uh, the highway department has done their part of it in cleaning the lot, and we're hoping to have a close at the end of May. Uh, we have also set an auction date for surplus equipment on Saturday, May nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, I spoke to John Ashley, who has previously served, almost like, and previously served as, uh, an auctioneer at our prior, um, auctions, and he graciously agreed to do it for the total sum of nothing, which is...
Perfect.
A very generous offer, and we appreciate that. The schoolhouse basement floor is done. King archival shelves, service is gonna put in the shelves tomorrow for record storage. Uh, I also want to recognize the highway department for helping us clear the land behind the schoolhouse. I'm gonna plant a grass back there, as well as putting some paving material in for parking. And that's it.
Slowly. Board of Health.
Eric?
Hey, yeah.
Hi.
Um, I gave you guys a copy of the last conference that we've had since our last meeting in March.
Mine, mine on there, too, because they didn't come back and pick up the stuff they left behind, mine also.
They did? Oh, we do that one again tomorrow. But it, it's, I'd say it's gotten marginally better, but not, like, oh my God, this awesome turnaround. So it's, it's been marginally better. But, all right, again, it's, it's the board's pleasure, what we do moving forward.
That was ready before.
Correct me if I'm wrong, on the contract, if we have to notify them we're gonna renew by July first, if we don't notify them to renew by July first, it automatically is not renewed, correct? Okay. That being said, I'll make a motion that we notify Republic Services that we're not renewing the contract.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go.
I'll... No, I'll take a...
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you in a minute.
It's already, I already picked it up and put it, put it, put it back in the recycling. It's just blowing around the, the street. Personnel Board.
All right. We have a, uh, request for a certificate of appointment for Christopher McKay, Ten Ledge Hill Road, South Row, Mass. And it's for the position of, uh, planning technician, term to expire October thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
So it's a union position, um, so everything that he has is according to... And Allie spelled it all out for everybody, too, so, um...
He want the, I have to step and read?
No, my God, right in front of me. So he's gonna sign off on this, too, to say that he, he agrees with, um, everything that you gave him, right? As far as the, uh, the numbers and stuff, okay, perfect. I want to thank you for coming up with that, um, form. It's so much easier, and I, and I want to thank you for doing that.
All right, so we have a certificate of point and a change of status form, right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And so I'll make a motion that we sign the certificate of point and the change of status form for, what's his name? Christopher McKay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the status change in the appointment form. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the next one is for a certificate of appointment to Timothy McIntosh, sixteen Water Street, Sonnet, Mass, for the temporary part-time recording clerk building and police subcommittee, term to expire October thirtieth, twenty eighteen. And the change of status is for a per diem of seventy-five dollars for me. Is there a motion?
Now, there's an issue on this one, right? Because he's a union employee?
We did, we did actually post it for everybody.
Will he be able to get paid on per, per meeting payment, or do we have to go through?
Actually, this was the per meeting payment, was the suggestion of the union steward.
Okay.
And this, this doesn't come out of our budget either. It comes out of the police station budget.
Correct.
I think that's not coming out of the, uh, the, the recording clerk.
Yeah, we can't, we can't take it out of the police station. It has to come out of town.
We discussed that with, uh, Kim. She suggested that it'll be taken out as a part-time.
So they can't come us out. We can't take that one from the police station.
So are we going to...
We're hiring, well, if they hired a recording secretary, it would come out of, it would come out of that budget.
I'm just...
Yeah.
We did, we did discuss it with Kim, and she, that's what she recommended, so I, I can go back to Kim and ask.
Yeah, because we don't have a, we don't have an account for this. This was supposed to be taken out of, um, out of, uh...
Police.
Right. Not the police budget, but the station.
The station building committee budget.
Yeah, either one of those.
All right.
As far as his appointment, though, I'll make the motion to...
Yeah.
Just needed to find...
And sign the change of status form.
Motion made and seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the third thing is a letter of resignation dated May one, Lois A. Amaral, eleven Cushman Avenue, East Free Town, to the town clerk, Jaclyn Brown. Dear Jackie, it is with regret that I tender my resignation from the Finance Committee senior clerk position effective immediately. I am grateful for having had the opportunity to serve on the, on the board of this fine organization for the past five years and nine months. I offer my best wishes for all continued success, Lois Amaral. Make a... I'll accept the motion?
I'll make the motion to accept Lois's letter of resignation and send her a letter of thank you for the service of the town.
And I'll second that for discussion. What is their plan of action now?
George came in. He asked me to post it internally, and I'd see if there's anybody interested in doing that. If not, then we're gonna have to advertise it and see if we can find a person to fill that position.
All right. Can call, call a vote?
Yeah. Motion made and seconded, I'll call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And the last item, the hiring of a video editor for the... And the last item, uh, the hiring of a video editor for the meetings.
I'm no longer able to do this. I would love to be able to do this, but I require some help from Zach, who is not going to be able to help me anymore because we have taken over, you know, we've bought our own equipment, and I won't be able to do this. Laurie is my recommendation. I can get the SD card to her within twenty-four hours, and, um, she'll be able to take over.
We did, we actually did, uh, have a conversation with Laurie today, and she has agreed to, uh, to do the editing. I know Lynn is going to continue to do the videotaping, and Laurie will do the editing. She can do it from her home on the computer, and then just put it in a Dropbox, and then we'll transmit it.
So, but no, no increase in the?
No.
Okay.
We're just going to break it seventy-five.
All right. I'm done.
Uh, you need a motion for that? Do we, do we need a motion? Are we actually?
We're not hiring.
She's already worked there. She's just splitting them one.
Yeah, they're splitting it, so we don't need to make a motion for that.
All right, you all set, Charlie?
I'm all set.
All right. On the new business, dates of upcoming Board of Selectment meeting currently scheduled Monday, May twenty-first. Annual special town meeting will be Monday, June fourth, at the elementary school, Monday, June eighteenth, Monday, July sixteenth, Monday, August sixth, and August, Monday, August twentieth. Executive session, anybody else, any questions or anything before we go into executive session?
One question, uh, regarding, uh, Republic. You said, uh, erasing the contract, it's going, not going to be renewed.
Just expire.
When does it officially expire? End of this year, or?
July, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Oh, I thought it liked you, or just. You're going to let it run out, it goes to the end of the year.
No.
How come they don't use a company like ABC where they get the robot out, coming out?
That'll be when we go, when we entertain the new stuff, that'll be.
I've been behind that guy. He's got to apply the air brakes, get out of the truck. Kind of, I don't know how they're making any money.
They make billions.
Have you been?
Well, have you been looking around for other proposals? We're still, we're still eight months away from that.
Okay.
Uh, more than that, ten months away.
One thing, if I may, ask our administrative office to do, so we don't have, so we can answer a question at town meeting, is to look into what would cost for postal card to be sent out for the maximum, uh, number of meetings, or number of issues that we might notify on the phone, um, system, what it would cost to do it on a postal card, so everyone has a clear picture of that. And if we, as we do it, if we could also, what it would cost to, like, type out the message also for, you know, have a good idea, that comes up. That question comes up, we'll have an answer.
Yeah, actually, I wouldn't even care if my taxes went up on something like that, because at least you get to see it and feel it and touch it and read it.
Okay, but we'll have an answer for you.
No, that's good.
How's that?
All right, anything else? Executive session, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one, three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in open meeting law. Open meeting may have detrimental effect to litigation positions of the public body, and its chair so declares. Excel Recycling LLC versus the town of Pre-Town. This will, will be going to executive session and not coming back into open session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
But you will, you be staying or you be recusing yourself?
I will be recusing myself.
Please let the minutes reflect that Mr. Sullivan will be accusing himself and not take part in executive session. Mrs. Pacheco?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones, yes?